Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Zion City Council meeting of March 3rd to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Mr. Berman, would you care to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We all, please, join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
This evening Pastor Dave Leopold is going to lead us in prayer.
Okay, let's pray. Heavenly Father, I pray for everyone in this room. I pray for everyone that they represent, every organization, every family. Lord, I pray for the first responders, the fire, the rescue, the police. Lord, we ask for their safety this month and every month. Lord, in wisdom, we pray for the schools, the administration, the teachers, the students. We ask, Lord, that you would keep them safe in our schools and that you would lead them and guide them and help them in the decisions that they're making. We ask for all the blue collar workers in Zion. Lord, those that work on the roads and collect the trash and all the things that they do to help our city, we just ask for your blessing and your mercy on their families. Pray, Father, for all the wayward, especially the young people who are caught up in gangs and drugs and problems. Father, we just ask that you would have mercy on all of these people who are in such need and some of them, it's not really all their fault that they've ended up where they are. We just pray that you would help them. We ask, Lord, that you would also make all of us more aware of our need for you and we thank you and I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Excuse me Pastor, what congregation are you from? What congregation are you from?
Zion Faith Home. It's more of a ministry than a church, actually.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Pastor Leopold. Item four, agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes from any of our commissioners? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number five, citizens' comments.
We forgot to put out a signing sheet so if anyone would like to speak at this time, we'd just ask them to identify.
There's no sign up sheet tonight, but if you have comments, I'd like you to step forward to the podium and you would have three minutes to make remarks to the City Going once, going twice. Item number six, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes. A regular meeting held on February 18th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Approval, but not release, of closed session minutes of a meeting held on February 18th, 2020 at 7:43 PM.
Make a motion for closing minutes. Second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills, vouchers 134543 through 134619 drawn on Huntington National Bank NA.
Is there a motion to approve? Move to approve the bills?
Second.
A discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number seven, consider passing ordinance as follows. Item 7A, abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2019 to pay the principal of an interest on $2.5 million of taxable general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2012 of the City of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. All three of these actually have the same purpose, the next three items. For all of our bonds that are pled, that use another revenue source basically as a pledge against the principal and interest we have to pay, we're required to put that money aside by December of the prior year for the subsequent year's payments, which we did. So we set aside December 2020's payments, principal and interest on these three bonds in December of 19 and then what we do is we abate, we pass ordinances abating the tax levy that goes with them because the way the bond underwriters do this to make sure that they get paid is they write into the bond saying, if you don't give us the money, we can basically take property taxes for these, but if you give us the money and escrow the money, you can then abate the property taxes because we have the money set aside. We don't have to go after property taxes. So these aren't included in the levy that we passed in 2019 because at the end of December because we already set the money aside, but we still have to get on record the abatement of that with the county because they have these on record. So that's going to be the same reasoning behind all of these, but you have the $2.5 million of general obligation bonds which have income tax as a revenue source, so I'll recommend approval of the abatement as presented.
Just one move. Second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 7B, abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2019 to pay the principal of an interest on $1,175,000 general obligation refunding bonds, water works and sewer system, ARS, Series 2015 of the City of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, per Administrator Nabel.
Again, the same item. These use the water, water and sewer revenues within that fund for the principal and interest. So we're abating, those funds were set aside, so we're abating the property tax levy that is associated with them.
Is there a move? Move to approve. Second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 7C, abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2019 to pay the principal of an interest on $3,140,000 taxable general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2017 of the City of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, per Administrator Nabel.
And last one, we have a revenue source of income tax, a pledge against them. Again, the funds were set aside, so we recommend the abatement.
Move to approve. Second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item A, discussion authorization and approval. Item 8A, consider approving budget for motor fuel tax for fiscal year May 1 through, May 1, 2020 through April 30th, 2021, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Typically, we don't like to piece meal out the city budget into individual funds for approval, but since the motor fuel tax fund is kind of a standalone encapsulated, it's kind of in a bubble, we only get, we get the motor fuel tax allotments from the state and that's what we use for road projects. We figure we could, we can go forward with this one now for approval because it'll help get us in the, in the construction cycle earlier and can actually get us better pricing on projects rather than waiting till later in the season and trying to fit in the contractor's schedules. So Director Roberts and I sat and went through our, and you have before you, what we have budgeted for, for the current fiscal year, which expires in April, what we project those actuals to be and then what we would like to propose for fiscal year starting May 1st, 2020 to April 1st, 2021, April 30th, 2021. What I want to bring your attention to is the first line of that budget, the state allotments line. Typically, we've been pretty consistent in getting about $625,000 a year in state allotments, but with the doubling of the state motor fuel tax last year, probably in August, we've actually seen about a $400,000, projected for a full year, we'll see about a $400,000 increase in our annual, about $420,000 of our annual allotments that we're going to receive. That allows us to expand our road projects and do more with that, which was, you know, ideally the goal of that as well. So we're going from $625,000 to $1,400,000 on that state allotments revenue line item. We're also, we have the comprehensive patching program, which we budgeted at $150,000, which was an expansion over what we've done in prior years already, but we're talking about increasing that to $200,000 to use part of that, that increase in the allotments. We also have a slight increase in the salt line item. We budgeted $150,000 on that. Unfortunately, the price per ton this year was significantly higher than what was anticipated. We do have minimum requirements that we have to purchase on that. I think it's 80% of what we, the tonnage, it's based on tonnage, not dollars, so we have to purchase tonnage at that higher amount, which is going to cause us to go over significantly over budget this year, but what we did is we anticipated that higher price at 100% level for next year and we're putting in $178,000. We're actually increasing the budget for, based on those needs, to $178,000. The big item you'll see on there is a, the road program and engineering line item, it's actually made up of two items. We want to put in there a $685,000 road project, which is one of the larger road projects that we've handled without grant funding in recent years. So this increase in those allotments allows us to actually do a significant road project for the first time in a long time on our own. We also, as an outable expense, have in there $40,000 for the salt barn roof, which is eroding and we don't want rain coming in there and melting our salt before we even have a chance to use it, so we need to get that replaced as well. The other items on there are streetlights and trees and general maintenance allocations, pretty consistent from prior years, but as you can see, we're budgeting an $83,000 surplus at the end of the year based on this. That allows us to have some fluctuation in there, some prices come in higher than expected or to potentially do alternate or amended bids or expansion on patching or have some flexibility or save that for next year to tack on to, again, a larger road program. So that's a lot of information for my due ones, but if you have any questions.
I'll make the motion that we approve this budget for the motor fuel tax fund. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 8B, consider approval of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code MFT funds for 2020 alley road program per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Council approved a proposal for the engineering services for the 2020 road and alley program at January 21st, Council meeting. Attached is required resolution by IDOT for utilization of motor fuel tax funds for the construction of this project. Staff request and recommend approving IDOT resolution for the expenditure of $685,000 funded from the MFT fund. On the back, you will see a list of, I'd say, 12 streets will be proposed to be completed along with two alleys.
I'll make that motion. Yeah, second. Is there any discussion?
Just a question, just running through, how many, I see that's all percents of miles. About how many miles total are we, we're going to get out of this?
You're going to make me add?
About a mile and a quarter.
David just looked at it and he came up with that number.
I was just adding them up as you were asking. We work together a lot. You can double check my math on that, that's an estimate.
Well, we had small steps and we moved forward, so, thank you.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 8C, consider approval of purchase of Motorola Starcom 21 radios per Chief Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have before you a rather lengthy memo detailing my request to purchase Starcom radios for the department. To remember back in June when I was appointed, identified this as a priority for our agency. For the benefit of the citizens here who don't have that memo, the Zion Police Department and most police departments for the majority of the last century have been on UHF radios. About 10 years ago, after 9/11, one of the things that was really identified as a problem there was interoperability between agencies. In the past, we had had frequencies for Waukegan and North Chicago on our UHF radios. Those are limited by technology. The State of Illinois and Motorola entered into an agreement where they would provide statewide cellular connections for radio for first responders. So these Starcom radios have been gradually taken over the entire police spectrum, law enforcement spectrum of Lake County, where maybe one of them, the two or three departments that are still on UHF radios. That severely limits the connectivity, communicating with other agencies in a time of crisis. Starcom technology is fantastic, but the proper frequencies, we could communicate on handheld radio with anybody down in the car in Lake County, Illinois. So it's quite versatile. Obviously, we don't expect to be using it that way, but we do expect to be using it throughout Lake County. The memo details the cost of that, it's significant. When I was first appointed, it looked like the city was going to have to be responsible for all of that, but our consolidation with our 911 boards, between Gurnee and Zion, has allowed for that combined 911 board to pick up 84% of the cost, which is, their portion would be just under, about just over $283,000, the most significant portion. The city's portion would be $54,000, largely on the police department side. The joint 911 boards would be buying the radios, the police and fire will be responsible for the service agreements, programming and accessories. As far as the police department's budget, my intention is, we've applied for a $10,000 grant for ComEd. Hopefully, we'll get that and it will go towards that, our portion of that. With or without that, the remaining will come through the Drug Traffic Prevention Fund, forfeiture proceedings awarded to us that have to be used to fight drug trafficking and certainly these radios would fit that state mandate for that. There is a cost to these that will impact our next year's budget, monthly access fees and a total annual cost of about $20,000. And I would just recommend, Council's approve, go ahead and purchase these radios. Make that motion.
Second. Discussion, questions? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number nine, departmental commentary, starting with our Human Resources Director, Karen Graves.
Thank you. We are excited that we are now going to be starting for our fire department, our written exams. On the 16th of this month, the information will be available. We will have some of the information, the requirements, on our website, but everything should be communicated and completed with iosolutions.com. So if you know anyone that's interested in being a firefighter slash paramedic, please share that information with them. We will then have our written exam on May the 2nd, 2020, at 8:00 in the morning. We'll start receiving individuals and we will be at Zion Park District, 2400 Dowey Memorial Drive for that. So again, if you know anyone that's interested in becoming a firefighter, please have them view the website, iosolution.com, but then they can also review the Zion website, which will then refer them back to this specific website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. The spring leaf collection has been set for tentative dates as of April 6th, running through to April 17th. It's two weeks worth. At this time, we would encourage all residents to rake the gutters, curving gutters up onto the parkways so the vacuuming can be done during this time period. Additionally, at that time, April 1st will start Vance's yard waste collection, so you could bag your rooms and stuff like that, they'll start that back up.
Just, just one question I have. Knock on wood that we don't have any snow. Is there a provision or?
I did say tentative.
Okay, all right. I didn't hear that, okay. Thanks a lot.
The second I got off the phone, I did this this morning with Vance.
Yeah.
I turned around, looked outside and it was snowing. So hopefully that's nice.
Okay. All right. Administrator Nabel?
Two brief items. For those of you who have heard me talk about my dollars and cents monthly presentations, that has been moved to, from a monthly to a quarterly meeting. It's all good, 6:00. The next one will be April 14th. I'll put it on Facebook as well, the topic, the time and everything like that. The second thing is, the census will be coming about soon. I just ask that everyone take it seriously, make sure all your information is reported accurately, correctly and that you're counted in this. It has a lot of implications for how it can impact your community. A lot of the city's budget is based on per capita revenue, so we get a certain dollar amount per individual for certain taxes, so the more we can get from that by having accurate counts, the less we can rely on property taxes to fill those gaps. So, you know, and then also as far as programs and other things that can help the community, we want to make sure that all the demographics are represented. So take it seriously, make sure your voice is heard and respond on those census forms.
Thank you. Just to add to that, to be able to complete the US Census online, that starts on March 12th, to start the census online and Administrator Nabel mentions a very important things of how the funding can help our community in several different ways. It gives us better healthcare services for our children and our seniors. Number two, stronger schools, a full count will help determine our school boundaries, funds our schools quarterly and approved programs. The third one, which is a county initiative as well, is to improve public transportation for underserved areas and certainly Zion fits into that category. And number four, I think really critical too, is our home improvement assistance will help funding available for home rehabilitation grants and loans. So again, March 12th starts our ability, our residents to be able to fill out the census online and April 1st, 2020 is Census Day. Chief Lewis?
Thank you. I'd like to just take a few minutes and talk about the hot topic right now, which is the coronavirus or COVID-19. So Lake County Health Department put out a little blurb on the update and along with some facts, I've noticed a few things online. People are running to the stores right now, buying gloves, they're buying masks. The most important thing to prevent the spread of this is your everyday tasks that you do from washing hands, sanitizing surfaces, if you're sick, stay home, you know, cover your mouth when you cough, you sneeze, et cetera. That's what the Health Department says is the most important thing to do, not run out and buy a mask. Interestingly enough, one of the infectious disease specialists from EOMedison said that this year's flu presents a greater danger to us in the United States than the coronavirus. It just happens to be that thing that's on the news and everybody's worried about it. So right now, there's 15 states that have had cases of coronavirus. 18 of those cases occurred in Kirkland, Washington, with the nine total deaths in the United States, all occurred in Washington. Interestingly enough, there are 30 Kirkland, Washington firefighters who are quarantined right now after a response to one of the facilities that had a patient with the coronavirus. So there's five cases in Illinois right now, they had another one today, who happened to be the spouse of the number three case. So they're telling you that the current risk to Illinois residents remains low, but that the state and county health department's taking steps to prepare. Illinois was the first state to provide a COVID-19 laboratory testing. There is no vaccine for COVID-19. As I stated earlier, community mitigation aims to slow the spread of the noval virus in communities using non-pharmaceutical interventions, better known as everyday preventive actions, including staying home when sick, covering coughs and sneezes, frequent handwashing and routine cleaning of frequently touched surfaces and objects. Even though they're looking at gloves and masks and gowns for healthcare workers, the public should remember that it's more effective to wash your hands and stay away from sick people than go out and buy gloves and masks. So just remember that everyday stuff, it's going to be on the news, but if we're all careful, we'll be fine.
All right, thanks Chief Lewis. If I, if my memory serves me correctly, I think in the paper this weekend, that the state has opened up a couple of different labs to be able to analyze the.
Yeah, I think if you keep track of what's going on, people are working on this day in and day out, you know, to figure something out.
Yeah, okay. Chief Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Somebody who may have noticed from Facebook posting, we had our first neighborhood policing event this past Saturday, Campbell's Barbecue, it was very successful, well received. We are planning additional ones later this year. That one was not widely publicized because what we didn't want to do was interfere with their ability to conduct business. I had a meeting down at Culver's last week, there'll probably be an event coming up there later this year and on Thursday this week, myself and the district officer will be going out to Woodstone Village Apartments to plan an event out there with them. So we continue to try to build our bridges with our community, get in contact with the people that our job doesn't normally put us in contact with.
All right. Any commissioners have any commentary?
Oh, I would just mention, you might want to mention the Black History Celebration on Saturday. You gave a very nice speech, very well received.
The 30th Annual.
30th Annual.
Black History.
Very good program.
Yeah, put on by the Park District and David Osborne Senior at the New High School Auditorium, Performing Arts Center. Was a terrific event, great entertainment and really well done. So sustainability over 30 years for that program, the Park District, and we had really good turnout on Saturday. The one item that I want to bring up is on Friday, March 6th, here at City Hall, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, we're having, through the, the State Treasurer will be here, Michael Freericks, and we're having an iCash event. And that event and the State Treasurer's office helps our residents to find unclaimed property in cash that they might not know that they have. So we need a strong turnout for that. It's been on our Facebook page, I'm going to put it on my Facebook page. We've been trying to pump this event. There's some pamphlets over there on the table that you can distribute to, to people to let them know. And the Illinois State Treasurer is tasked with safeguarding unclaimed property such as unpaid life insurance benefits, forgotten bank accounts and unused rebate cards. Illinois holds more than $3 billion in unclaimed property and the State Treasurer is legally bound to return the property rightfully, no matter how long it takes. So there'll be a press conference here at 10:30 with the State Treasurer, myself, Senator Melinda Bush, his State Rep Joyce Mason will also be in attendance and this is one of the events that we've been setting up for quite some time. I was fortunate enough to receive a call from the State Treasurer the night of the election and we've been working on this venture for quite some time. So please spread the word, come out to City Hall on Friday, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They will have a lot of representatives from the State Treasurer's office that will be able to help you or anyone you bring here to find unclaimed properties, not only for Zion residents, Waukegan, North Chicago, Winter Harbor, Wadsworth, Beach Park, whoever wants to come is, is welcome and this is a great service being put on by our State Treasurer. Item number 10 is announcement on March 17th. Item number 10 is announcement, on March 17th at 5:00 PM, we have a public hearing for a proposed Tiff District on 173 and Lewis Avenue. Again, that's March 17th, 5:00 PM. At 6:15 PM on March 17th, we have a Zion Township Board meeting, and at 7:00 PM, we have a Zion City Council meeting. That, again, that's March 17th. On April 7th, this year's going fast already, at 7:00 PM, a Zion City Council meeting, and on April 10th, the city offices are closed for the holiday. At this time, item number 11 is closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2 open meetings for the discussion of collective bargaining personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session? So moved. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.